Unmuted.
All right, being six thirty, we'll call the common council meeting in order and for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with swearing in of the new London council members.
So the new council members would stand up, the three elected council members would stand up. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Melinda Cry.
Who has been elected to the office of alderperson.
Who has been elected to the office of alderperson.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations on your reelections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. Rick Ryers, we'll call it been taken now?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, then we move into for the the adoption of the agenda. I have one consideration for striking standings. Let me see here, Board of Public Works, line item three. Get a motion.
Make that motion second.
Motion been made, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, please say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried. All right, approval of three eighteen twenty twenty five common council minutes.
Move to approve the minutes, Your Honor.
Motion made by Mr. Fache, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any additions or corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried as well. It's good to get through this one without a tongue twister. Mr. Dorsey, authorization to pay the bills.
Sure. Make a motion to pay the bills and get them out though. One million four hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars and forty one cents.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Magowski. Any additions or corrections to those? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight zero. Nine zero, right? Yeah. Public comment? Public comment? Public comment. Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to the organizational meeting items. Starting out with the election of council president, and that needs to, that's required to carry by six votes. So we will open up for election nominations.
Nominate John Hess for council president.
I'll second it.
Nomination made and seconded for Mr. Hess. Any other nominations?
With the second.
Mr. Ritchie. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will close the nominations. In front of you, you'll find a piece of paper. Please circle your vote, and then the clerk will collect those in the tally.
And she said the past. So it's one eight.
So we have one vote for Mr. Roberts and eight for John Hess. Congratulations, John.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next is designate New London Press Star as official newspaper.
Show more of your eye.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington. Dorsey's second. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. And that motion's carried eight yes, one abstention. Next, resolution designating public dispositories. Motion made by Mr. Herter. Second by Ms. Magowski. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero as well. Moving along, appointments to committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start out with the mayoral appointments of standing committees. And those will stand as read in your packets without council approval. The next one for the planning commission needs council approval, so we will need a motion and a second.
Show more.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess. Any further discussion on that as well? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero as well. Thank you all. All right, standing in special committees, Board of Public Works, Mr. Hess.
Over there, guys. Board of Public Works met Monday, April seventh, two thousand twenty five. Union's called order at five fifteen. Motion was made to approve the agenda and seconded and carried by all. There was no public input. Motion made in second for approval of February third, two thousand twenty five meeting minutes carried by all. Wastewater Treatment Plan Update, wastewater notes enclosed in the packet. Consider for approval of the AECOM County Highway S Landfill Monitoring Agreement. Proposal for landfill monitoring went up more than in the past years. AECOM provided a reason for the increase of twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. This is the time and retail estimated not to exceed that amount. It was noted that they have billed well less than the proposed amount in the past. The committee discussed going out for proposals in fall of this year. Motion made and was seconded to consider and recommend the council approval of AECOM County Highway Agreement. Motion carried nine zero. Update of residential garbage collection. Director Garsky advised that he had reached out to area communities who had adopted residential refuse pickup. He relayed that what those municipalities have done since using the service. The contact through, the contract through Oregon County was also reviewed and there are requirements for terminating the recycling service, which is currently required per the agreement. The director continues to move forward and hopes to have an RFP out by late May. No motion was made or vote was taken. Proven recommend petition for discontinuance of Glory Road. Glory Road is plotted to connect with East Ridge Street. There's a section of that land that's preventing that from happening, so a new owner of the land wishes to plot the property differently to create a road that will loop with each end connecting to Elkan Road. The first step is to make the possibility as to can discontinue Glory Road. Motion made or seconded or recommended council, the petition for discontinuance of Glory Road. Motion carried nine zero. Directors, Director's report, the Director's memo was included in the packet and reviewed by the board. Aniversaries. Julie Geeson, custodian, seven years of service. Roman much. Waste water operator, two, two years of service. Oshkosh Street Evaluation, the storm main by the engineers was determined that a good portion of the storm main is in good condition. Efficient areas that were replaced as well as all the structures. All inlets, all leads that run from those inlets to any connections will be new. South of Jennings Street to Pershing will be new with a combined mini sewer running behind the curb. Sanitary main is complete from Wolf River Avenue to just short of Washington Street intersection. Lateral's in the right way portion are just about done. Side street mains are connected. We get, we gas has been on site rehabilitating service and relocating some gas utilities. House and Elkan Road bid was awarded to MCC by the state. This is under an eighty twenty STP local grant. The costs incurred with the town of Liberty, ten percent each. No pre-construction meeting has been scheduled. No construction timing has been set yet. Two thousand twenty six Highway fifty four and Shawna Street intersection will be closed north-south directions, east side closure lasting approximately four weeks. This will not happen until the Highway forty five section is complete and will lip will limited access to Highway fifty four east-west travel. Highway fifty four traffic will remain open during the construction. Businesses will have alternate access availability. Future agenda items are citywide contracted garbage collection. Date and time of the next Board of Public Works meeting is Monday, May fifth, two thousand twenty five at two, at five fifteen. There's no further discussion. The motion made second to adjourn meeting at six fifteen. I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of AECOM's contract for the County Highway S landfill monitoring.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Ritchie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero.
So I'll have your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
As Your Honor, Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesday, April second. Union was called order at five fifteen. Approved the March twenty twenty five meeting minutes. There was no public comment. Fire Chief Wilfer presented the Hortonville, Hortonia Fire District Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement. Screaming allows for mutual aid between New London, Hortonville, and Hortonia in event of a structural fire emergency. This agreement was also approved by the Police and Fire Commission meeting. Motion made, approve that, send that to council. Administrator Horrith updated treaty on changes to update the vacation policy to allow some flexibility upon hire and during a break period at the city administrator's discretion. That has been recommended to council also. Finance Director Akki explained the movie rating scale and the process of water, sewer water and electric facility went through a rating call as part of the process. They're upgraded from A three to an A two rating. Purpose of presentation was to give the committee insight about bond rating, process works, and the key elements and components needed when the city goes out for debt. Finance reports are reviewed. The Director's report was discussed. There'd be no further business. We adjourned at five fifty four. I'll make a motion to approve the monthly license list.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey. Second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried by all.
Make a motion to consider the approval of the Hortonville Hortonia Fire District Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried eight yes and one abstention.
Make a motion to consider the approval of the vacation policy changes.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey. Second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Park and Recreation, Mr. Bissaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Park and Recreation, Park and April, Park and Recreation, met on Tuesday, April eighth. Meeting was called order at five fifteen. After the pledge, motion was made to second and adopt the agenda. Motion carried ten zero. Motion was seconded to approve the February fourth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Motion's carried by all. Public input being none. Conversation regarding Vietnam Veterans Memorial Rock at Memorial Park. Director Saul brought to committee a public request by the Seven Eleven Club to move the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Rock from Memorial Park to Taft Park in the as part of the Veterans Memorial. Several people representing various veteran organizations expressed their opinion in favor of the moving memorial. Motion was made in second by Hess, approve the movement of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Rock to Taft Park Veterans Memorial. Motion was carried ten and all. Consider approval to enter the agreement with the SCSEP Creative Connection Program. Director Saul brought to the committee the agreement from SCSEP Creative Connection Program fulfill a position with the senior center and senior transit system. Motion is made in second to approve the recommendation to council to enter into agreement with SCSEP Creative Connection Program. Motion was carried ten all. Removal review for approval, Senior Transit Rider Policy Update. Director Saul presented to committee an updated policy. These updates include updates to the wording and the refusal of service, allowance of service animals, and addressing the carrying of weapons, along with the D increase that has already been in practice. Motion made in second to approve this update, Senior Transit Rider Motion. Motion was carried by all, ten all. Director's report, Director Report was included in the agenda pack and reviewed by the committee. Additional comments, notes as follows. Approved for a fifty fifty match grant to towards the boat launch overflow lot and courtesy dock project for two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and ninety five ninety three cents. Coordinated three different volunteer groups to the Green Team Initiative, April twenty first and twenty eighth. Snow Norway coordinates to be reviewed due to recent complaints. Chairman reported there was none. Future agenda items, grant to agree with the WDNR to accept the funding for the recreational boating facilities grant. Slow Norway MOU with Wapaka in Oregon County. High school student involvement for CLARP project with student citizen. Next Park and Rec meeting meeting will be on Tuesday, May sixth at five fifteen. Motion to adjourn, meeting was adjourned at five forty five. Motion's carried by all. I will look for approval of the agreement with the SCSEP Creative Connection Program.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess.
Yeah, that was me.
Second by you?
Yes, sir.
Oh, excuse me, second by Mr. Fache. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero.
And I look for approval of the Senior Transit Rider Policy Updates.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw.
I'll take it.
Second by Mr. Ritchie. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried nine zero as well.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bissaw. Moving along, Planning Commission, Mr. Ritchie.
Okay, we had no meeting in March, but I have consideration for approval for ordinance rezone parcel number thirty three thirty sixty five six twelve to MP second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Magowski. Any consideration for conversation? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero.
Hey, consider for approval for ordinance rezoning parts thirty three thirty forty three five hundred the six oh one Monte Street to MP, which is manufactured park, second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero.
Hey, consideration for approval of ordinance rezoning parcel thirty three twelve seventy seven one twelve to B one, second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie. Second by Ms. Magowski. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero as well. That for you, Mr. Ritchie?
That's it, Your Honor.
Thanks, sir. Moving along, Economic Development Committee, Mr. Dorsey.
As Your Honor, Development Committee met on Tuesday, March twenty fifth. Meeting called order at five fifteen. Minutes from February twenty fifth are reviewed, approved. There was no public comment. Eric falls off from childcare resources and referrals via presentation to committee about their organization, the resources they offer, recent partnerships with Packer County, and the overall state of childcare in Wisconsin and Willpack County. CCRNR offers program to assist childcare providers in starting a new business as well as training technical system, helping grants and other resources. Also shared statistics about childcare providers in Willpack County based on a recent survey. Currently, there are thirteen group centers, ten certified family providers, and one school age program operated in the county. Willpack County has approximately twenty four hundred and sixty six children under the age of five, but childcare capacity for only nine hundred and five of them. Three group childcare centers in the county are operating at reduce due to staffing shortages. The average cost to send an infant to childcare in the county is approximately thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars, which falls a notice is higher than the tuition at many public colleges. In two thousand twenty two, Willpack County received a Dreeno grant and partnered with CCRNR to provide additional resources to local childcare providers, which several providers in London benefited from. Also emphasize the importance of continued and increased state funding needed to improve childcare availability. Committee thanked him for his time and his insight and valuable information that he shared. Or provided information to the committee about a new marketing subscription service called Placer AI, which Willpack County Economic Development Corporation recently purchased. Service can track a number of people who enter a defined area, making a useful tool for estimating attendance at special community events. Since the city is a member of the corporation, we're able to obtain reports from the organization. Committee reviewed some examples, which included data on event attendance, attendee origins, household demographics, and other insights. The city can use this data to demonstrate the economic impact of events and business draws for in London. Chambers Director's report. New remodel of Willpack County Courthouse, Willpack County UW Extension Office is temporarily relocated to one eleven West Northwater Street. UPS at five oh four West Northwater Street has closed their office in London. Chamber had a root cutting for Huckleberry Acres on March twenty eighth. New London Lanes and Hillbys has been sold to a new owner. City Administrators Report, the city was notified as a so-called business grant, which it applied for in partnership with Willpack County Economic Development Corporation, was not awarded. There's also reported a situation in which the city provided information to a business seeking to build sites in the region for a new manufacturing facility. Unfortunately, one of those not selected for consideration. The city's Marketing Committee comprised of representatives from the School District Chamber and several other organizations, exploring the ideal proposing a new city tagline. More information will be presented at a future meeting. Applications for a joint grant writer position have been received. April Scott Black and Administrator Arthur reviewing the applications and review scheduled interviews in the near future. Potential. Hopefully. The committee reviewed potential items for next meeting. Moved into closed session. After closed session, we moved, we instructed the city administrator to research hiring a consultant for a negotiation of property in the Northeast Business Center. Meeting was adjourned at seven twenty seven. That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. All right, minutes and reports as distributed will stand as read in your packets. Keep this train moving, we'll do reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. Starting off with the mayor's portion. First, I have the letter carrier stamp out hunger, food drive proclamation. Whereas hunger affects millions of people nationwide, including children, seniors, and military veterans. And whereas food insecurity remains an important concern for our community, our state, and our nation. And whereas food pantry shelves filled from winter holiday giving are often bare in late spring. And whereas many school meal programs end in the summertime, leaving families of school-aged children needing to find alternate sources of food. And whereas on the second Saturday of May each year, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable And whereas on the second Saturday of May each year, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food items and donate the items to local food banks as part of the nation's largest one day food drive. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. The letter carrier stamp out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Whereas since the pilot drive was held in nineteen ninety one, more than one point nine billion pounds of food have been collected and all the food collected in our community stays in our community. We support the letter carriers efforts to help those in need in our community. And now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of the New London, Wisconsin, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim this tenth day of May twenty twenty five as letter carriers food drive day in the city of New London. And further, I encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier, carrier and or their designated volunteer will pick up your donation while delivering the mail. And together, we can help stamp out hunger in our community. Thank you. And with that, I have a resolution supporting world migratory bird day. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory song, songbirds as symbol, symbolic heralds of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insects, pests, and generating million in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas since nineteen ninety three, world migratory day, world migratory bird day has become a primary vehicle for focus focusing public attention on nearly three hundred and fifty species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U S. Whereas while, while W M B D officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, it is, it is observed. Excuse me, it's observed, uh, that its observance is not limited to a single day and planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas W M B D is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also call to action. Now therefore, I mark herder as mayor of the city of New London, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty five as world migratory bird day in the city of New London, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds in habitats in our community and the world at large. All right. That is all that I, oh, no. Um, I need a motion to ratify the bird proclamation as well. So I need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Bissaw, second by Mr. Dorsey. Any discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried nine zero, thank you all. All right, clerk, election results, please.
Um, first, I wanted to relay a message from Belinda Croy speaking as a citizen. Um, as vice president of branch eight twenty two of the National Association of Letter Carriers. She wanted to thank the mayor for the proclamation regarding the letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive. So thanks from the vice president.
Well, visit.
Um, and then turning to the election, the information on the um, results and the turnout are included in your packets. Couple of things to note, the results um, are city of New London specific, so they're not results for the entire county. Um, or anything like that, it's just the results for our, um, our results. Um, but it does include links to the school district and the um, Wapaka and Oregon counties where those official election results for the entire counties um, or the entire school district are included. Um, and then I did include some information on turnout for the election, it was a pretty big turnout for a spring election. Um, you know, I mentioned at our last meeting that we only had eight percent of registered voters show up for the February election. While we had fifty two percent of voters turn out for the um, April election, so it was a big jump in numbers and more than we typically see in an April election. Um, we had five hundred plus more voters than we typically have for spring elections. It was a pretty busy day at the polls. Um, we were, um, had poll workers at every one of our polling places that did have to hand count ballots because we ran out of ballots at every place. So it was a, a pretty busy night, um, but all of the poll workers, um, yeah, met the, the task with, um, with success, so um, successful election and that is all for elections for twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. All right, city administrator, Mr. Herd.
Thank you, your honor. Um, last week, Thursday, I was able to attend the annual chamber awards banquet. And once again, the chamber has most certainly outdone themselves in creating a great networking and communication event for the business community. Um, and I know I sound like a broken record, but I take the every opportunity I can to promote what the chamber is doing. Um, they're half of the city's economic development team, even though they're not a department of the city. Definitely half of the city's uh, economic development team and they're growing. Um, April Kepitsky, the chamber director tells me they're at about two hundred and ninety seven members. Um, the membership has been increasing and I'm not aware that they've ever hit three hundred. So they're pretty close to that, that number and um, hopefully they hit that soon. So congratulations to the chamber on another very successful and great event. Um, supporting our business community and continues to put New London on the map. And that's all I have, your honor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herd. Enter and chief, please, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, your honor. A couple of things, please partner, we still have a few weather radios left over for these citizens, look for some weather radios available to the citizens of New London. When we run out, we'll update our Facebook page that we don't have them anymore. And I'd like to recognize our dispatchers, this week is the telemo telecommunications appreciation week, so the dispatchers answer the phone and when you call the police department are the ones you meet at the front desk. So thank you to Lisa Taylor, Katie Hermis, and Ashley Bosquest for helping it's police program. All I have, your honor.
Thank you very much, also thank you to their service as well. Uh, Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, your honor. Um, construction on Ashcoy Street is progressing as planned. Uh, the help of the second crew over the last three weeks has kept them on schedule. Uh, even with some of the weather delays we've had. Also, spring yard waste collection is happening right now and will continue through the twenty fifth of this month. Um, yard waste is placed in the street at the curb line. Branches are placed perpendicular to the road behind the curb line. Um, after April twenty fifth, no yard waste will be permitted in the streets and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Director of Park and Recreation, Miss Saul.
Thank you, your honor. Um, the Easter Bunny will be hiding eggs at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center on Friday, April eighteenth. And swimmers can come and help us get them out of the pool and win some prizes too. Um, we ask that swimmers be ready to jump in by one fifteen P M. Then the Easter Bunny is going out to the J C's Dog Park on Saturday, April nineteenth to hide eggs for all the dogs in town. Um, join the recreation apartment for the Great Pump Pump Hunt at eleven A M. Um, dogs must be leashed for the hunt that takes about thirty minutes. And then after that, they can enjoy the park with its regular posted routes. And then just a reminder that the city is still in slow knowing for right now.
Thank you, Miss Saul.
Yep.
Utility manager, Mr. Basset.
Uh, thank you, your honor. On April fourth at one twenty four A M, we had a call, a person struck a fire hydrant on Washington and on April fourteenth at nine thirty seven, we received a notification of an outage at two twenty twenty four Southland Lane, crews responded, found half power and repaired the service. Uh, last Friday, you probably noticed the traffic signal at Pearl and North Water Street was reinstalled. Uh, P T S has water main installed on Wolf River Street, all the way to Cook on the Ashcoy Street project. And then last, I'd like to recognize Matt Abba for five years of service with New London Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Basset. Uh, fire chief, Mr. Richie, do you have a report for the chief?
On behalf of the fire department, I'd like to recognize Eric Sager for sixteen years. Zach Dunby for sixteen years. Aaron Odd for eleven, Andy Burns eleven, and John Stock for seven. That's all I have.
Thank you all for your service as well. Uh, next I see on the list is adjournment. So motion made by Mr. Barrington. Second by Mr. Richie, all in favor say aye. Opposed?